Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our full council meeting on Wednesday, the 17th of February. If you'd all like to stand for the prayer, please. Creator and sustainer of all things and all people, you are the source of all wisdom and light. Enlighten our minds to receive your guidance so that you may lead us into true wisdom. May all that we say and do in the service of this county, whether as elected member or as an officer, be in accordance with your will and for the good of your people. Amen. I would like to welcome all members and visitors to the council meeting who are joining the meeting online. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live via the County Council's website and will be archived so it can be viewed later. To start, I will ask Lauren Haslam to take a roll call of members to make sure all members can see, or at least hear, everyone else. Lauren, could you do the roll call of members, please?
Thank you, Chairman, and good afternoon, members. I'll go through the list of names in the usual way, and perhaps I'd invite you, please, to let me know if you've had any problems with the sounds or vision as I'm doing so. Mr Barclay?
Thank you, Lauren. I can see and hear clearly.
Thank you. Mr Bedford?
Hi, Lauren. I can't see you, but I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Mr Bentley?
Yes, hi. I can both see and hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Bill?
Yes, I can. David Bill here. I can see and hear everybody clearly.
Thank you. Mr Blunt?
Yes, I can see and hear everybody correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Balter?
Yes, I can see and hear everybody. Thank you.
Mr Bray?
Yes, all okay, Lauren. Yeah.
Thank you. Mr Brecken?
Yes, all okay. Thanks, Lauren.
Thank you. Dr Bremner? Dr Bremner?
Absent.
Thank you. Mrs Broadley?
Yes, I can see and hear. Thank you. Mr Charlesworth?
Yes, okay, Lauren.
Thank you. Mr Coxon?
Can see and hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Crooks?
Can see and hear. Thank you.
Dr Einan?
I can see and hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr Felton?
Yes, Lauren, I can see and hear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs Fryer?
Good afternoon, Lauren. I can see and hear.
Thank you very much. Mr Galton?
Yes, thank you. All good.
Mr Gamble?
Can see and hear. Thank you.
Mr Gillett?
Yeah, present, Lauren, and no problems.
Thank you. Mrs Hack?
Hi, Lauren. I can see and hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Harrison?
Yes, I can see and hear you. Thank you, Lauren.
Dr Hill?
Yeah, I can see and hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Hunt?
I can see and hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Kaufman?
Yes, I can see and hear you.
Thank you. Mr Licarish?
Hello, Lauren. Could see and hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Mia?
Hi, Lauren. I can see and hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Morgan?
Hello, Lauren. I can see and hear you.
Thank you. Mr Mulaney?
Hello, Lauren. I can see and hear you fine. Thank you.
Miss Newton?
Thank you, Lauren. I can see and hear you.
Thank you. Mr Rocher?
Thank you, Lauren. I can see and hear you.
Thank you. Mr Orson?
Thank you. I can see and hear.
Mr Osborne?
Afternoon, Lauren. He's away today.
Thank you. Mr Old?
Thank you, Lauren. I can see and hear you.
Thank you. Mrs Page?
Good afternoon. I can see and hear.
Thank you. Mr Payne?
I can hear you, Lauren, but I can't see you.
Thank you. Mr Parton?
Good afternoon, Lauren. All correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Pearson?
Hello, Lauren. Yes, I'm fine. I can see and hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Pendleton?
Yes, Lauren, I can see and hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Fillmore?
Yes, President Lauren, I can hear everybody and see most people, but I can't see you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr Poland?
Good afternoon. Yeah, I can see and hear.
Mrs Posnet?
Everything's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs Radford?
Yes, I can see and hear you.
Thank you. Mr Rhodes?
Yes, I can see and hear you.
Mrs Richards?
Thank you, Lauren. I can see and hear you.
Thank you. Mr Richardson?
All okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs Richardson?
Hello, Lauren. Yes, everything's okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr Rushton?
Yeah, good for me, Lauren. The only person I couldn't see was the chairman when she speaks.
Okay, thank you. Mrs Seaton?
Thank you. Thank you. I can see and hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Sheehan?
Yes, Lauren, you're coming through clearly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Shepherd?
Good afternoon again, Lauren. Yes, I can see and hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs Taylor?
Good afternoon. I can see and hear, Lauren. Thank you.
Mr Welsh? Mr Welsh? Mr Welsh? Okay. Mrs A-
Lauren is having his jab. He'll be along at some point.
Thank you very much. Mrs A Wright?
Yes, I can see and hear.
Thank you. Mrs M Wright?
Hello, Lauren. Yes, I can see and hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr Wyatt?
Yes, Lauren, I can see and hear you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, members. Thank you, Chairman.
Lauren, before we begin, could I remind members of the rules for this online meeting? These are set out on the order paper. Switch off or keep your mobiles on silent. During the meeting, keep your microphone muted until called to speak. If your microphone is left on, please note that an officer will mute it remotely. I have a list of members who wish to speak on each item. I will read these out after the motion has been moved and seconded. If any member not on the list wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. Before finishing each item, I will check that all members who wish to speak have been able to do so. When called to speak, unmute your microphone and please mute again when you've finished speaking. If at any point the webcast fails, we will have a short adjournment. Please stay online while the problem is resolved. In accordance with the following orders, we will need a recorded vote on the MTFS. You will be asked to indicate if you are for or against. Keep your microphone muted until your name is called. Please speak clearly when asked. Chairman's announcements. It is with sadness that I report the death of former County councillor, Mrs Evelyn Ensall. Mrs Ensall passed away on Monday, the 11th of January 2021, aged 98. Mrs Ensall served on the County Council from November 1976 to April 1985, and represented the Market Bosworth Number Four Electoral Division. At term of office, she was appointed chairman of the Personal Services Committee and as JAP Vice Chairman of the Social Services Committee. She also served as a member of the Environment Committee and Police Committee. I call on members to stand in silent tribute to the memory of Mrs Evelyn Ensall. Thank you. We're coming up to a year since the impact of the coronavirus began to be felt here in Leicestershire. Plans are underway with our partners to mark the anniversary of the first case in Leicestershire on the 6th of March and the first lockdown which followed on the 23rd of March. We will be playing a key role in remembering those who've tragically lost their lives to COVID. There will also be opportunities to thank key workers, those many officers in our own council, as well as the contribution of others, as well as the efforts of volunteers and unpaid carers who have stepped forward through this year. We will, of course, say thank you to all residents. They have played their part in reducing the spread of the virus, following the guidance to protect family and neighbours. There will be acknowledgement of those who have struggled through this year, facing hardship, isolation, mental health issues, or the long-term effects of COVID. I am pleased that funding for the Watermead Memorial Walk was secured earlier this month, and that there are also plans to dedicate a tree at County Hall in remembrance of those staff who have lost their lives. I will ask that members look out for further details about the memorial activities, and they are able to reflect and find some comfort through them in what has been a difficult year. I move that the minutes of the meeting of the council, held on the 2nd of December 2020, copies of which have been circulated to members, taken as read, confirmed, and signed. Mr Kaufman will second.
Yeah, I'll second that, Chair.
Are all agreed? Thank you. I invite members who wish to do so to make declarations of interest in respect of items on the agenda for this meeting. I am assuming that all members who are members of district councils will wish to declare a personal interest in relation to the medium-term financial strategy 2021-22 to 2024-25. I am advised that the following members wish to declare a personal interest in the MTFS. Mr Payne, County councillor, in relation to passenger transport issues, as his family operate a taxi business. Mr Fillmore, County councillor, in relation to special education needs and disabilities, issues due to his wife's employment. Are there any other declarations? Thank you. Questions and replies set out in the order paper will be taken as read and entered into the minutes. We have had a supplementary question to question D, submitted by Dr Einan and a reply from Mr Rhodes. Question E, submitted by Mrs Hack and a reply from Mr Pendleton. These are set out on the order paper. Can I take these as read? Thank you. Agenda item five, to receive position statements from members of the Cabinet. A position statement may give rise to an informal discussion by the council. At the conclusion of the discussion, a formal motion may be moved to the effect that the statement be referred to the Cabinet, the Commission, a board, or a committee for consideration. This shall be moved and seconded formally and put without discussion. No other motion or amendment may be moved. The discussion of any position statement shall not exceed 20 minutes by the Chairman. But the Chairman may permit an extension to this period. Now call on the leader to make his statement. Please use the raise hand function if you wish to speak. I will invite the leaders of the opposition parties, Mr Galton and Dr Einan, to speak before inviting other members. Mr Rushton, please.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, thank you and good afternoon. My first item today is on litter wambles, and I speak to you today as Uncle Bulgaria. I am a part-time litter wombler, so I have a personal experience of what a good job they do. We're introducing a new scheme to try and help them, because you can see obviously my statement, so I'll just add a few bits to it. When I went out wombling in Belton, part of my electoral division, one of the problems that the wamblers faced was the fact that they couldn't get hold of the lightweight fold-up road signs to alert motorists that volunteers are helping to keep our hedgerows clean. So this initiative here helps them, the fact that we're going to provide these collapsible signs. So they're easy to get in and out of your car, and if you're going on a walk, they're actually easier to carry. Another issue that they raised with me was the fact that they tried to get the litter out of the tops of hedges, because the people that litter the streets and the hedgerows often do it by just slinging stuff out of their car windows. So they asked me if we could provide some extra-long litter pickers, and it was Louise Richardson who prompted me to include those. So at the prompting of Louise, we are actually going to provide the long-reach litter pickers as well, as well as some high-vis jackets. District councils do some good work on this, so we're going to be contacting them to let them know what we offer. And also, as Christine Radford said to me yesterday, there are some parishes, and big parishes, say like Shepshed, where she represents, where we'll contact them as well to let them know what's available. And there is a website. It's hardly going to trip off the tongue, but it's or you can email community.litter@leeices.gov.uk. My second item is something as an administration we're very proud of. You worked on it yourself, Madam Chairman, before your elevation to high office, and that is the LGBT+ agenda, and this month is History Month. This month is a chance to increase the visibility of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and trans people, their history, lives, and experiences. These stories are often the hidden stories that we've not heard before, and the month helps us to remember the milestones that have been fought by the LGBT+ people in Leicestershire and beyond in the recent past. We will be working with our partners, the City Council, and we will be working with Leicestershire Police, and we will again proudly be flying the yellow flag every day in February to remind us how far we've come and to celebrate the LGBT+ people of today. That's not to say that there's not a lot, lot more work to do, but I think as a council, if I speak on behalf of the whole council, we have done a lot of work, and we should be proud of what we've done, but recognise that more needs to be done. You mentioned COVID earlier on, Madam Chairman. As you know, we've all suffered virtually a year now, and at your instigation, Madam Chairman, we're going to do a COVID memorial work, a walk at Watermead Park. We're trying to do it on the 23rd of March. The first case was the 6th of March, but this goes along more with the lockdown. So not only have we lost our own members of staff, County Council, but we probably all know someone, and I personally know at least three people who have died as a result of COVID. So to start this memorial walk is a good thing to do. And as you know, you guys who represent areas around Watermead Park, it's not just our park. It's also owned, half of it's by the City Council, but when people go a walk there, they don't think, oh, I'm going out of the county bit into the city bit. It's just a really nice park to walk on. So we'll be going. The City Mayor will be invited. I'm inviting the county councillors who are butts the park, if they would like to come along. And I'm sure SPS in the city may well invite some of his members that are butts the park as well to come along. Again, it's something we should be proud of. A lot of the money's been raised from the public, not from the public purse as such. So once it's open, I'd advise, or I'd ask all of you, if you do get time to go a walk down there, it's a great park, and it's something that Leicestershire and the city should be proud of. On the supporting residents and community groups and businesses during COVID, we've done a lot, and I'll leave most of it to Louise, who's done a lot of the work on it. But just highlight that we awarded a million pounds to us, 170 groups through a round three of the Leicestershire Community Fund. We were first, we stood straight up to the plate, we did, when there was a threat that schoolchildren weren't going to be fed, until Marcus Rashford persuaded the government to fund it. But we shouldn't hide our light under abortion on this. We were in there before public opinion persuaded the government to do it. So we should be proud of that. And also, another one which is good, is the 138 so-called community stroke wet pubs, which we've assisted with a thousand pounds. Some of these businesses are suffering more than anyone because they can't do, I mean, even the restaurants that are doing takeaways are suffering. Don't get me wrong, because now everybody's doing takeaways. But some of them can't do takeaways or don't do takeaways. And these little pubs in the little villages, which a lot of us represent, are more than just a little pub. It's almost, you know, where the communities go to meet. So again, 138 supported. I think we should be proud of that. I'll leave the rest for Louise to go to, but while I'm on, Chairman, can I just say a few thanks to people who I've appreciated their help of over this last year? So first of all, can I thank all members of the County Council, irrespective of whether you're Labour, Conservative, or even Liberal, for the work that you've done over the four years? And especially in the last year, your attendance at the briefings has kept us all informed. And of course, you've acted as ambassadors of the County Council, going out there and telling people what we've done. And we have actually really, really tried our best this year to do what is right to do for the benefit of the people of Leicestershire. And finally, I know he won't get thanked, and he probably won't thank me for thanking him, but I'd like to thank John Sinnett personally for the work he has done. He has not missed one single day in this office for the past year, even though, again, he won't like me saying it, he is relatively old. But he has worked tirelessly, tirelessly throughout this year. And as anybody who knows him, his contacts with the National Health Service and other chief executives in the country has been invaluable to me, and I feel certain it's been invaluable to all members. I'll leave the Mike Sands and his team thanks to Lee, who's speaking afterwards. And with that, Chairman, I'll conclude. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Mr Galton, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and good afternoon. And yeah, as even the leader of the Liberals, can I echo what the leader has said in relation to thanking the work and join him on behalf of, I suspect, all members, the work that the officers of this council have done and our partners in the districts and even in the parishes. You know, everyone has put in a huge amount of effort to try and get us over this situation with the pandemic. I know how hard some officers work, sometimes late into the evening, because emails still keep popping through. So yeah, absolutely endorse what the leader has said. And in his report today, there's not much really to take issue with. It's all pretty good stuff. Of course, it's support the LGBT History Month and look forward to that. Watermead Park, yeah, I think it's important that we do have somewhere that we mark as a piece of history. And yeah, I mean, it'd be good if that was done somewhere else in the county, perhaps, and not just at Watermead Park. Perhaps that could be the first of several memorials. Perhaps he could give some thought to that. And then, of course, the work that we've done supporting residents, community groups, and businesses during COVID, and the money that's been put into that. Yeah, we just wish we had more, really, could do more, but within the constraints of money, I think we have done a good job. Just going back to the first comment, I'm afraid I really support exactly what he's saying about dealing with litter and helping the community address that, and that is going on. There are people out there, you see them, picking up litter and doing their bit in their communities. And of course, we should help them with kit to do that. But I just can't resist his comment about the litter wambles. And I'm sure many members remember the TV programme, and it's just interesting to do a few comparisons. Perhaps our leader is Great Uncle Bulgaria, the oldest and wisest womble. And the leader, he occasionally frightens the younger wambles with his stern manner and his habit of glaring at them through his spectacles. Orinoko, a shirker who loves sleep and food. Bongo, over enthusiastic and bossy. And then, of course, Madame Chalet, a very kind-hearted but short-tempered female womble. Mr, Madam Chairman, this describes our cabinet. You couldn't make it up, could you? This is the cabinet. I'll let members decide which one they wish to associate themselves as the correct womble. But I don't think the leader can get away without being compared today in his statement to Great Uncle Bulgaria. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Mr Galton, and your resume of descriptions of some members of the Cabinet. Can I now call on Dr Einan, please?
Thank you, Chair, and I would like to also endorse the statements made by both the leader and councillor Galton. The work done by our staff has been absolutely exemplary, and also that of the volunteers who have helped us to survive this pandemic so far. As far as the wambles are concerned, I wouldn't call myself a womble, but I have been a regular litter picker with Hugglescott Parish and with the town centre in Colville. And I'm really pleased that the wambles are now going to get the kit they need. I know that Hugglescott Parish Council, at their meeting, were planning to supply this themselves. So I'm glad it's now coming from the county, and I hope that there will be communication, because I'm sure that more parish councils have been trying to do their bit to help the wambles to do their good work. I also am very proud that LGDGBT+ history is being taken so seriously by this council. Our attitude towards diversity is exemplary. And clearly, the COVID Memorial Walk will be something that perhaps we can't all go to an opening of it, clearly not. That would be against the very principle of what we're trying to do to survive the pandemic. But at some point, I think, yes, I will be wanting to take a walk there and think of the people that I know who have been lost to this terrible disease. And I share the leader's pleasure in that we, as a council, have supported community groups. We did step up to the plate with free school meals. We stepped up to the plate when the government was lagging behind, and I think we should be proud of that. And I think another area where we are stepping up to the plate is on Kickstart. The Kickstart scheme could be, if done in a cheapskate way, it could be a way of just giving kids six months treading water somewhere with a company that has very little idea of training. But no, we are working with Leicester City Council, and we are giving them a whole year, which makes it much more like a real apprenticeship. And that is an area where perhaps there is a little concern about the Kickstart scheme, which I know is shared by apprenticeship suppliers, that apprenticeships are falling away. And though I'm thoroughly supportive of our own scheme and what it's trying to do, I am concerned that that money isn't being invested in real apprenticeships, and that the apprenticeship levy that we've paid as a county council and other businesses have paid in is still going into the government coffers rather than being used to train young people. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Dr Einan. Can I now call Mrs Hack, please?
Thank you, Chair. I've said before, I thank the leader for his position statement. I've said before about how grateful I am for all the volunteers that have put their hours into, not only to support the COVID effort, but other things too. I just wanted to highlight the wambles, if I may. And I just thought I'd give the council some numbers, because I'm sure this will be something for us all to be proud of in terms of our communities coming together. Last year, last calendar year, the wambles collected 15,794 bags. They've already collected 7,000 up to date this year. So it's remarkable in terms of what the public are doing to try and combat litter pollution in our communities. In a recent womble, a crisp packet I collected out of the ground was from 1999. These things do not biodegrade. So every piece of litter that's brought out of the countryside- So every piece of litter that's brought out of the countryside is a piece of litter that an animal or, and doesn't try to eat. And I think that has to be something that, that we have to thank our communities for doing. I just, if I may, wanted to raise also the word that's been done as part of the litter wambles, but it's separate, is on the helipads for helicopters. So far, two, two and a half thousand tonnes of empty cans, sorry, two and a half tonnes of empty cans were passed through a house in my division alone from the efforts of litter wombles. So what this is, is they're trying to smelt down the empty cans for a helipad at the Leicester Oil Infirmary. At the moment, it lands on Nelson Mandela Park, if, if you need a helicopter into hospital. So I just think, I just thought it would be useful to let council know of this other initiative that's going alongside the litter wambles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Hack. Mrs Newton, please.
Sorry about that, I have problems on muting my mic. I just wanted to say, Nick, thank you very much for mentioning that this, the LBGT History Month this month. Normally on this, this month, universities and other public organisations actually celebrate LGBT plus, but because of pandemic, people can't get together and celebrate. But I would like to thank you for raising it and mentioning it here today. Thank you.
Mr Parton, please.
There's, there's two points. The first one is, is that out of fairness, if you actually look at Wikipedia, the womble theme, Uncle Bulgaria, after the description said, it states, but is also very kind. And I would say that someone having to lead a council during a pandemic, he's done it with fairness and authority, and he's been extremely fair to everybody. And, and as example of kindness, when you look at his statement and you add those figures together, since the pandemic started, this council has, through the causes in his statement, donated and administered a total of £5,538,000 to those that need it the most, either businesses in the county, vulnerable young people and families, and also charitable groups, who of course, by the very nature, are helping the most vulnerable and possibly those on the lower end of the socio-economic scale. So I would class that as very kind.
Mr Parton. Mrs Richardson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just to expand on a couple of the community things that the leader pointed out. Firstly, I do want to thank all the officers that have been continuing to keep services going and yet taking on all the additional work of Covid, and for all the volunteers who have helped in so many ways. The leader mentioned the third round of the Leicester Community Fund has now closed. We had 229 applications with a value of £2,232,000. We've got 170 of those have been approved in full or in part, and over a million pound being awarded, and those decisions are being issued this week. And since the beginning of the Covid pandemic, the council has awarded over 3.5 million pounds in grants to support Leicester communities, voluntary organisations and businesses. We had the community fund rounds one, two and three, which has been 2.6 million pounds allocated in grants to 390 community groups and organisations supporting vulnerable people. We've issued the def refunding to support food hardship, which was £250,000 to 26 food banks across the county. We've sent out the business support grant, £750,000 allocated to support over 100 local businesses. The leader mentioned the pub support funding in his statement, and we've also had £250,000 of contained funding allocated to support voluntary sector recovery. So in total, 600 voluntary sector groups or businesses have been allocated a grant ranging from £1,000 to £25,000 by the end of this financial year. And also, even though we haven't been able to hold events and memorials physically, we've been extremely active in organising virtual online events, setting up specific websites, for example, the Holocaust Memorial, and videos for equalities. We've supported Black History Month, Armed Forces Day, and again, this month, the LGBT Plus Month. And our own staff networks have been very active in compiling their own videos for staff. And I've asked for them to be looked at, to see if we can tweak to put on the website for residents. So that's just a flavour of what's been going on in the background. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs Richardson. A very busy department. There are no other speakers, so now I'll call on the lead member for health to make...
Yeah, sorry, Chair. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Can I first of all thank Louise for giving more information than I'd got to hand. You can just show what good work we've done. Can I ask, thank Ted Parton for clarifying that Uncle Bulgaria is actually kind. And so say to Simon Galton that I am happy now, on Ted's advice, to be Uncle Bulgaria, if you'd like to note that down, Simon. Terry, can I ask, thank you for your support for Kickstart. As you rightly pointed out, we have extended Kickstart in Leicester and Leicester to one year. I think it will benefit people to do the 12 months, not the six months. And we should be proud really that we do work with the city on this, because often some of the children or young adults or whoever go on Kickstart, they, they don't just live in the city or live in the county, they move between the areas, either for work or home. So I think it's a good initiative to work with the city on doing it for a year. Amanda, can I thank you for your wombler statistics? I did know them, but I didn't read them out. One thing that is important, Amanda, two things you mentioned are important, not only about clearing up litter, it does clean and protect the areas where animals live. And when I was out wombling, you could sometimes go and pick up a, and one of the wambler showed me, picked up a plastic bottle, and in the bottle were dead small animals, because they go in these bottles and whatever, drink what's in there, and then they can't get out. So it's not only keeping it clean, it does help protect the, the small animals, which we all appreciate and like. So that one, thanks for mentioning that, Amanda. And also the one I did forget is obviously the, the cans for helipads. And in the area where I went wombling, Belton, they do have the large red can bank with the crusher on it. So there is actually a statistic, which I can't tell you today, about how many cans you have to actually collect to buy a helipad, but I would imagine Leicestershire is, is already well on the way for it. Belton got their can bank through their parish council. I, I would say if anybody wants can banks and is struggling to find out how to get them, again, approach the county council and we can perhaps help you source the can banks and see how they can get funded, because the, the amount of cans you pick up is pretty much dwarfs everything else. You know, people go along in cars, drinking whatever, and God only knows why, but they just sling it out of the window and think it'll disappear. Well, it doesn't, it sits there until a volunteer comes along to pick it up. And Betty, again, thanks for your positive comments about LGBT plus. I know, same as Pam, it's a passion of yours, I know you do it for us at the fire authority. And with that, I'll conclude, apart from one text I've received from one member who wants me to mention, the White Horse in Whitwick. The White Horse in Whitwick are particularly grateful to receive that, that thousand pounds grant. And I know that because Tony Gillars just told me. Thank you very much, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr Richardson. Now I'll call on the lead member to make his statement. Can you please remember to use the raised hand function if you wish to speak? Mr Breckin.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. It is interesting, I, I was just looking at the Leicester Mercury Live feed, and certainly Dan and Amy have picked up on Nick now becoming Uncle Bulgaria. So I always thought all council leaders had to be kind people, it was one of the skills that we needed. So, so well done, Leader. My statement today is with you, but I am going to read it for those that are watching online that haven't accessed it as yet. As we start to look towards the anniversary of the first national lockdown, announced by the Prime Minister on the 23rd of March last year, it is only right that we remember the 1,200 people who have died from coronavirus in Leicestershire. Indeed, in the leader's statement, he highlighted the opening of the memorial walk at Watermead Park. I do hope that this will help those families who have lost loved ones as a place to reflect. I'm sure over the coming months, many other community-based fitting memorials will follow as we move forward and the pandemic becomes a part of our history. This council will not meet again now before the anniversary of the first Leicestershire case that occurred on March 6th of last year. The continual decrease in infection rates during the current national lockdown is welcomed, with the rate in Leicestershire now being below 200,000, which is half of the rate it was at its peak in mid-January. Today's figure is 174, with the national figure being 148. However, it does remain a concern that rates of infection are still very high compared with the position before October last year. Rates are not falling as fast as the national average, with the East and West Midlands currently the two regions with the highest rate in the country. It is therefore, still remains imperative that we follow the lockdown rules that are in place, and advise as much as possible to drive down the rates to more manageable numbers. This council, working with other partner organisations, continues to lead the fight against coronavirus. Through the almost weekly all-member briefings, members have been appraised of the significant workload made in communications and engagement, testing, enforcement and compliance, as well as supporting the clinically extremely vulnerable. The other work reported on is included the local contact tracing services and the detailed outbreak investigations and control. Outside of public health, we've also had regular updates on schools, adult social care, and also regulatory services. The rolling age of testing for those without symptoms who are unable to work from home has been a key focus of the work of the Public Health Department so far this year. We now have seven sites that are fully operational across the county, with over 3,000 tests carried out so far. To put in place a service operating across the county with over 200 newly appointed staff is a real testament to the continued hard work of this county council. The vaccination programme goes from strength to strength with our NHS partners achieving high coverage in the most vulnerable cohorts of the population. While it is important that we all carry on practising the key message of hands, face and space, members will recognise that the vaccination offers the country the best chance of getting through this crisis. I would therefore echo our Director of Public Health's clear message that we continue to urge the public to take up the offer of vaccination as it is offered to them. I am sure that we have all been profoundly affected by the pandemic in so many ways, and I would like to give my continued thanks to not only our Director of Public Health, Mike Sands, and his incredibly hardworking team, but to all of the officers of the county council for the continued efforts above and beyond the call of duty. I would also like to say thank you to all of you as members of the Leicestershire County Council for all of your continued work on behalf of the residents of Leicestershire, and continuing with all we do in these difficult and challenging times. For me, as Lead Member of Health, the above position statement covers what we have done in dealing with this pandemic as a county. We have all felt and seen every day the effects of the pandemic. To overcome these impacts and effects, we have needed inspiring people, and I believe no one inspired us more than Captain Sir Tom Moore. He inspired so many of us to make a difference and lifted our spirits at those much needed times. It is sad that he will not see life begin to return to normal, but he remains an inspirational figure to all of us, and we should all salute him for all he did for us as we all look forward to the future. I'd just add that as members briefing, all-member briefing yesterday, we had the NHS, and they informed us that over 240,000 people have now been vaccinated across Leicester, Leicestershire and Rotherham. This is real progress towards our return to a normal life. Just finally, to everyone listening today, thank you for playing your part in getting us here today, and please stay safe. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr Breckin. And can I just endorse what you've said about our public health staff? We've got two speakers, Mrs Hack first, please.
Thank you, Chair, and the lead member for his position statements. The focus is inevitably on the pandemic, the impact locally and the work that's been done to try and combat it. It's been the focus of our almost weekly conversations, which I valued to get questions and concerns answered quickly and effectively. So thank the team for the work that, that's gone into that. As the lead, as the lead members already said, so many people have sadly lost their lives and others have lost a loved one, friends or colleagues. The challenges our community face in the long term to get their lives and, and their businesses and their health back on track will be a long one, and I'm sure a bumpy one too. And just picking up what, what the leader raised with regards to the memorial walk in Watermead Park, again, I think the work that, that has gone into put this forward has been really, really good, and I'm sure this will be a place for reflection for many. The lead member is right, the Midlands still remains a place in the UK that hasn't quite seen infection rates falling as quickly as other areas. We've seen many places in the county that have had extended periods of lockdown, and whilst this has had some effect, there has been a concern that these rates continue to be persistent. The vaccination programme, however, does provide some hope that we can at some point get some relief from the virus. However, we'll need to ensure as councillors that we still support our communities with a message that we need to continue with the hands, face, space messages going forward. The vaccination programme, from the approval role at logistics and those vaccinating, I have to say, has been nothing short of remarkable, which makes me wonder and genuinely little sad that a missed opportunity we have had in managing the virus. Our NHS has delivered on this critical part of pandemic recovery, yet the decision made on giving the vital worker track and trace to a private provider instead of public sector colleagues was always an initial disappointment to me, but will now always feel like a what could have been moment. Our colleagues in public health have also played their part, as well as our colleagues in the council. And more recently, they've stepped up to the job of the, and the pace of tracking and tracing, and I thank them for their contribution going forward. Let's hope the next year doesn't feel the way that this year has felt. Thank you.
Mrs Hack. Mr Parton, please.
There are, there are two crucial health matters that really pertain and are very topical at the moment because of the, the pandemic that's now nearly entering its, its first anniversary. And they're, they're both very relevant to Leicestershire County Council. The first one is that the, the Health and Scrutiny Panel, we received a report from the Director of Public Health about the healthy weight strategy. Now, that's something that's going to Cabinet in spring. And we have seen that one of the, the largest factors that affects chances of complications from coronavirus is unfortunately high BMI. So it's something that post-Covid, it's, this is going to be critical, that the county council have this, have this real responsibility, that we, we are the, the drivers of helping people to, to become more healthy. This is, this is actually, if there's something good to come out of this coronavirus pandemic, it's the fact that we now have this opportunity to say, here are good paths and good opportunities. And, and when you look at that strategy, there's so many recommendations in it. It's, you could easily fill an A4 piece of paper up with the list of things that the county council is suggesting. So we certainly have a brilliant opportunity to make a great success of this healthy weight strategy. And secondly, I will read you the front page of The Mind, which of course is the UK's biggest independent mental health charity. This is what it says, if you go on the Mind website, it says, this is a mental health emergency. The coronavirus pandemic is having a huge impact on our mental health, and they ask for urgent donations. And I would urge all members to do everything you can to join the mental health briefing on March 8th, because not just like the healthy weight strategy, but now we need to be seeing how we can help with the mental health emergency. We've got a climate emergency, we've also got a mental health emergency, and that is something we need to put right at the top of our priority list.
Thank you, Mr Parton. There are no other, oh, Dr Hill, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Like others, I'd like to express my thanks on behalf of the group to Mike Sands and his team. I think this last year has been interesting, to put it politely, and I think it's shown the power and the benefit of local government compared to national government in terms of delivering a lot of the, the changes we've seen. in terms of delivering a lot of the changes we've seen. Once local government got properly involved in track and trace and dealing with it, I think we seem to get a much better grip on things. I'd also like to thank the fact that we have had weekly briefings for most of it to keep us informed as community leaders about what's been going on. And that's been incredibly useful. And it does allow you to talk to people with some semblance of knowledge rather than some of the more interesting stuff one sees online. I'll say no more than that on that. I just, the future's going to be interesting because we're coming out of the other side, but what we're coming into, I'm not sure. The pandemic has forced a lot of change through, which is, some of it's good, some of it's bad. But I do think as a council, you know, we're moving to a new landscape, whether we like it or not, and it's going to be very interesting in the future. Thank you, Chair.
Dr Hill. Well, on the chairman of the scrutiny, oh, sorry.
Yeah, if I can, Madam Chairman, can I just thank Councillor Hack for her kind words? I think we are all in this together. And I do think the vaccine and the work that we've done is the way out of this. Ted raised the issue of mental health and I think certainly the work that we've seen, the pandemic has brought to the fore mental health issues. And it's also brought aid to public exercise as well. And I think if we look back to what Mike and his team at Public Health used to deal with the day jobs before the times of COVID, I think he will be quite happy to be coming to this council and talking to us about his obesity strategy, which was really the bread and butter stuff. In fact, his last annual report last year was based on, I think, over sixty percent of all adults in Leicestershire were classed as obese. And it was something that we needed to look at and that will start coming back to us as some sort of normality does resume. Can I also thank Councillor Parton for just mentioning the mental health briefing, which is taking place in March? And that will bring, I think, much-needed updates to members on that. So, and again, Dr Hill, I'd just say thank you for your kind words. And I think Mike and his team have done an excellent job. But as I say, I think it's thanks to everyone who's listening today, all officers, all members. And we have done an excellent job throughout these really tough last eleven months. So thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Brecken. And I'll call on the Chairman of the Scrutiny Commission to make his statement. Please use the raised hand function if you wish to speak. I will invite the Leader of the Council and the Scrutiny Commissioners to speak if they so wish before inviting other members. Mr Galton.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to make a statement to the council today. The Scrutiny Commission and the committees are continuing to adapt to new ways of working, making the best use of technology to ensure scrutiny continues to work despite the current restrictions. By example, later this month, we're going to be holding our first fully remote scrutiny member workshop to look at the work undertaken across the council to support and engage with communities and the role this has played during the COVID nineteen crisis. The workshop will provide a valuable opportunity for members to share their experiences to identify what has worked well, not so well, during this difficult time. The usual routes to contact and reach out to residents have had to be adapted over the last twelve months. Whilst we have embraced the use of technology, continuing our work, it's recognised that it is not always appropriate or possible for all residents. And we must therefore work to ensure the council's approach is as inclusive as possible despite the current circumstances. With this in mind, Madam Chairman, scrutiny members will consider the barriers to good community engagement, especially in the light of restrictions necessary to battle the pandemic, which may continue for some time to come. We'll look at what lessons can be learnt and what positive experiences can be developed and captured as part of the plan review of the council's community strategy later this year. All scrutiny members have been invited and are encouraged to take part in what we, the commissioners, hope will be a valuable exercise. Over the coming years, scrutiny will continue to play a critical role, looking at growth and the implications of this on the county council as the key infrastructure provider when it comes to the council's infrastructure policy. The financial consequences certainly need to be understood. The commission had a useful and constructive discussion last year on the implications of the Leicester City local plan. And we'll be keen to see how these growth proposals are affected in the light of increasing housing numbers now allocated to the government, to Leicester City by the government, which will unfortunately, so it appears, have repercussions for the county as a whole. We've got a particular session coming to look at this. And we're going to be calling some lead members. We particularly look forward to calling Mr Pendleton as Chairman of the Mag. A key area of focus for scrutiny throughout this year will continue to be the environment and how the council will drive forward its commitment to become carbon neutral in its operations by twenty thirty. Environment and Transport Scrutiny Committee and the commission will have a role to play. And both will therefore be looking at the council's strategic energy property strategy next month, which is a key delivery mechanism for the environment strategy in respect of the council's own property assets. The Environment Scrutiny Committee will also be looking at the new strategic approach to biodiversity issues. Now, the budget process has highlighted the significant cost pressures on the council of send, and in particular, transport costs. A workshop is planned later in March for members of the children and families and Environment and Transport Overview and Scrutiny Committees to consider the statementing process and how decisions are made regarding the provision of transport for these vulnerable young people. Invites will also go to the relevant Cabinet Lead Members and the Lead Member for Resources so that we can have a full and informed discussion on this matter. I hope, Madam Chairman, that gives you a flavour of the work to date and some key work planned on challenging facing the councils. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Mr Galton, I will now invite the Leader of the Council, Mr Rushton, please.
Nothing much to add, Madam Chairman. I'll wait to see what other people say. Just to place on record, my thanks to Simon for the work he's done and is doing. And his emphasis in his speech, in the future, having a look at the council's infrastructure policy and financial consequences will be very, very valuable work to be done. And I'd encourage him, if I'm honest, to crack straight on with that after the election. Although, as you know, Madam Chairman, it's not for the Leader of the Council to instruct the Leader of Scrutiny to do anything. But he'll no doubt know what I've said. But thank you, Simon. And also thanks to all my members that are on there, Rosita and Peter Bedford, who lead for us, and also all my scrutiny chairmen who carried on with the normal amount of work, even though they've all been working remotely. Thank you, Chairman.
Rushton, Dr Einan, please.
Thank you, Chair. And I thank Councillor Galton for his position statement. And I think we should all be proud of the way that our scrutiny commission works, that it works across political boundaries and it is opposition-led. And I think that has a lot to do with why it is so effective. It supports the council in making appropriate decisions and looking forward. We have a lot of commitments. We have commitments on climate change, biodiversity, infrastructure, special educational needs. These cannot just be warm words. And where scrutiny really functions is in achieving those outcomes by holding us up to account. And I think that doing that despite the low funding that we have here, we should be proud of the work that is done by the scrutiny commission. And with the House of Galton, I would encourage all members to attend the workshop, the Communities Workshop coming on. I've been part of the planning of that as a scrutiny commissioner. And I think this will be a great opportunity for us all to learn from each other and to improve our practice. It's very difficult at the moment to engage with our communities. And I think this will be something that we can all learn from, that will be useful for us all in our next term, should we make it past May the sixth. Thank you.
Mrs Page, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I echo the words that have just been spoken. But I welcome the statement by Simon Galton very much and the work that scrutiny undertook last year and has planned for the coming year despite the restriction faced in the light of the pandemic. The planned scrutiny workshop will, I think, provide an excellent opportunity for us all to discuss and challenge the way we communicate and engage with our communities. I hope that will contribute to some new and innovative ways of working that will benefit all our residents in the future. As community leaders, I think it is important that our experience as elected members are captured. And this forms part of a refreshed community strategy, which I think is very important going forward. It should also be acknowledged that the county council has worked hard to support its community, as we've noted from previous portfolio report and speakers. And I welcome the support the county council has provided to the local voluntary and community groups to ensure they can continue their good work as they too will play a vital role in supporting the people to recover from the effects of the pandemic in future. I hope that holding our first virtual workshop will act as an example of one of the alternative approaches to how we as scrutiny can deliver in the future. We have demonstrated through the conduct of the flooding panel, rather, the flooding scrutiny review panel, that good and valuable scrutiny can still take place by remote means. And not, and to thank Mrs Maggie Wright as the Chair of that panel and all the other members involved in this review for the recommendation it's made. I encourage members to share some of the key details within this report with your residents as it provides useful information on what residents can do to protect their own properties and who to contact, both for support and preparation for floods and future flooding events. Could I conclude by thanking all the staff for their continued hard work in supporting the delivery of all of the council services at these difficult times, as well as supporting the scrutiny process? And may I conclude on saying how very proud I am to be a member of this county council at this difficult time.
Thank you, Mrs Page. Mr Pendleton, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Can I say to Mr Galton how absolutely delighted I am at him extending an invitation to me to be able to talk in front of scrutiny about the challenges that we're going to have as we go forward in delivering the houses that our government really wants us to and about the infrastructure. I should be absolutely delighted to listen to what scrutiny have to say and to take on board their recommendations wherever I can. Thank you, Simon. I really do welcome the chance for an open and frank discussion. That'll be really great. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Galton, Mr Galton, do you wish to come back? There are no more speakers.
Well, thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you for the comments and feedback. Suggests we're doing the right thing generally. There's always more to be done. Also, it's not possible to do everything. We do have to be selective in what we can look at and resource. But I think I've tried to highlight, or hope I've tried to highlight, some of the key issues and challenges that the council and indeed Leicestershire as a whole is facing. And also to thank particularly Mr Pendleton for his comments. We always like to have Cabinet and influential members who chair committees, both within and outside the council, in front of scrutiny, so we can give them a good scrutiny. What's the process? Is it scrutinising of them? But no, seriously, there's a really important job to be done here and we look forward to that. Thank you.
Simon. Agenda item number six. Can I remind members that this item refers to pages twenty-three to two eight six of the council booklet? Could I ask those who wish to speak to raise their hands? Sorry, Mr Rhodes will introduce the report and move the motion. Mr Shepherd will second. Then it will be opened up for the matter to be debated. Mr Galton is deemed a principal speaker, so has ten minutes. All of the speakers have five minutes. There are some members who have indicated that they wish to speak. Dr Einan, Mr Payne, Mrs Taylor, Mrs Richardson, Mr Brecken and Mr Pendleton. And I believe I've got some more coming along now. And Mr Mayor, Mr Sheen, Sheenan. Okay, so I'd now like to give the report on the medium-term financial strategy to ask Mr Rhodes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
My hand up. Madam Chairman, I put my hand up as well.
And my hands up as well.
So you've no need to interrupt, Mr Rhodes. Okay, thank you.
Shall I begin again? Thank you, Chairman. I'm very pleased so many people want to comment. I hope they're all going to speak in support. We shall see. Well, I write much authorically, that is, as you see. If I was in the council chamber, I would do, to move the resolutions on the order paper numbered from little A to little R. And specifically, the resolutions include little E, which relates to increases in the council tax. Last September, some six months ago now nearly, when I last reported to the council on the state of its finances, I said the world had been turned upside down. It's yet to right itself, but some of the changes which the COVID crisis brought are becoming clearer. Firstly, home and remote working will continue. Economic conditions, which have sharply deteriorated during the crisis, will continue for many years. And whilst inflation is low, there is evidence emerging that construction costs, which are particularly of interest to us, are rising significantly. And eventually, I think taxes, national particularly, will have to rise to pay for the borrowing. The councils will not be immune from any of these pressures. So in that context, the medium-term financial strategy, which I put before you this afternoon, is by far the toughest programme yet since I took office in this, in this portfolio in two thousand and twelve. There is some relief offered by government, but nothing like enough for Leicestershire, which continues to be the lowest-funded county council in England in spite of the promise back in two thousand and sixteen to introduce fair funding to replace the current and antiquated system for allocating business rates and government grant to local authorities. This results in councils such as Leicestershire and other shires having to increase council tax year on year to keep up with spending pressures, mostly driven by demand. Similar pressures do not affect councils in London to anything like the same extent. For example, Westminster London Borough Council receives more than three times as much business rates and government grant per head as Leicestershire. And he's able to charge less than half the council tax for a property in an equivalent band. Such gross unfairness has to be put right, but it will be at least another year before government acts. We've only been saved from bankruptcy by the determination of officers and members to reduce costs year on year and maintain services, especially the caring services for adults and children, which have been our priority. It is no accident that Empower, the benchmarking consultancy company, rated Leicestershire County Council, the most productive in England, for three years in succession, up to two thousand and nineteen. And the two thousand and twenty figures, of course, have not been published. Let me now turn to the changes which have been made since the draft MTFS was presented to the scrutiny committees. On page thirty-six of your packs, you will see a table in paragraph twenty-nine. This shows the changes in grant and a revision to the funding gap. The most significant change is brought about by the proposal to take the additional three percent increase in council tax for adult social care. This has been a very difficult decision to make. We are all aware of the financial pressures on many people in Leicestershire, brought about by COVID and the recession in the economy. But without it, we would have to look at significant service reductions. The additional cost for a bandy property of the four point nine nine percent total increase is five pounds fifty-nine a month for a bandy property. The consultation which closed in January showed that fifty-five percent of respondents would support an increase of three percent or more, and half these accepted that more than five percent would be needed. By taking the decision to increase council tax by three percent for adult social care as permitted by the government, in addition to the one point nine nine percent already put forward, and adding other grants and adjustments, it is possible to project break even positions for the next two years and to reduce the anticipated shortfall in year four from thirty-six point three million to twenty-three point four million. This still leaves us with a significant gap, which in my view should be closed by additional funding from fair funding, not by forcing us to make further savings, which would most likely reduce services. However, we have been able to set up a Covid fund to protect the budget from further cost pressures, especially in the coming year, when the recession will bite. If that is not needed, it could be reallocated to fund other service priorities. I now want to turn to the capital programme. In December, we took action to prune it back in order to balance our books this year. The new capital programme lists projects totaling four hundred and fifty-seven million. Funding such a demanding programme in the present climate is exceptionally difficult. Whilst a major part comes from grants and capital receipts, there is a shortfall of a hundred and forty-three million over the four years. In previous times, we were able to fund some of it from contributions from the revenue budget. That will no longer be possible once we've used up the accumulated balance put by from previous years. Some people say we should just go out and borrow money. Borrowing is cheap, they say. So it is compared with a few years ago. To borrow, say, ten million would cost three hundred and fifty thousand pounds per annum for the next forty years, if we used internal balances. But if we needed to replenish them, as eventually we would, the bill would rise to four hundred and fifty thousand pounds per annum and possibly more if interest rates start to rise again. Okay, you might say four hundred and fifty thousand pounds, not much. We could find that. So what services would you cut to find it? And what if you had to borrow a lot more, say fifty million or a hundred million? Councilors who have gone down that road end up petitioning the Second O State for help to pay their immediate bills as they run out of money. You know who I mean. Some of them are not very far away from us. So we have to seek funding from developers, and that is where the district planning authorities come in. There is a reticence on the part of some districts to acknowledge their part in ensuring capital projects are funded. The councils put forward proposals to the districts for solving this problem. They have yet to be agreed. If agreement cannot be reached, it is difficult to see how sufficient funding will be available to fund all the programme. Chairman, I want to conclude on a brighter note. This last year has been the most demanding since I was elected to the council twenty-four years ago, but we've weathered the storm as we have other storms over the years. The council is still financially strong in spite of all the pressures, and not every council can say that. And remember, we are the lowest funded. I'm still optimistic that eventually our case will prevail, and in the future, we will get a fair share of the national funding for local government. And I'm determined that whatever we have to cope with until that is achieved, we will not fail as others have done. After all, we are Leicestershire. We get it right. Thank you, Chairman.
And now call upon Mr Shepherd, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I formally second the motion. As Byron has remarked, we have some complex and detailed documents to consider, and they've been closely examined by scrutiny. I'd like to thank scrutiny colleagues for all their work on that. Byron referred to the gravity of the situation, but he was able to end on a brighter note. And that gravity and that brighter note, they really sum up the truth about Leicestershire's situation and Leicestershire's spirit. We recognise the financial situation. We don't turn away from it and hope that everything will be all right somehow, someday. That leads to a downfall. There's a determination to make the difficult decisions and to maintain our support for the most vulnerable, of which we are rightly proud. And also, a determination not to lose sight of the prize, which is to win for the people of Leicestershire, a fair share of the national funding of local government. So I'm pleased to second the motion. The additional three percent of adult social care was indeed a difficult decision. But the alternative, of course, is to risk serious service reductions. And it's, I think, worth noting, Chairman, when there's so much in the media in terms of different words used and figures quoted, that when the government refers to core spending power, they're actually assuming in that that we take the maximum increase in council tax for the coming year. The capital programme Byron referred to, there's something new and different and potentially threatening he has to report to us. The county needs to build houses, we're told, in which case people who live in them will need infrastructure to go with them. They'll need roads, as an obvious example. So as county councillors, we all need to look to the borough and district councils as the local planning authorities to secure the contributions we need from developments, from developers for that infrastructure. Byron ended on that brighter note, and justifiably so. Leicestershire's record of determination justifies that, and we all owe a debt to Byron for his personal drive and determination. We are the lowest funded county council, yet, as Byron says, we will not fail. In Leicestershire, we get things right. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr Galton, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to respond to the medium term financial strategy. The four point nine percent increase being imposed on residents of Leicestershire because the government has consistently failed to do anything about addressing the chronic underfunding of public services in the county. It's not just this council that we see the problem with. Again and again, local services are being affected, such as fire and police. This is the worst time to consider having to have such a large increase in council tax in the middle of this pandemic, when many people are genuinely finding it difficult to make ends meet. This report in front of us provides all the key facts and figures you need to understand what is happening and what has gone wrong. The contribution by the local council taxpayer towards funding local services has gone up from two hundred and thirty-three million in two thousand and fifteen to three hundred and forty-two million if these proposals are approved today. That's an increase of over one hundred million pounds. And as I remind the council, every year in two thousand and fifteen, we received fifty-six million in revenue support grant. Now we receive nothing, nothing at all. Now, at the cabinet, Mr Payne put his finger on it, and Mr Shepherd's again referred to the misleading system that the government uses to rank councils' available resources and the ability to spend, and of course referring to the core spending power. Apart from the obvious point that this is not money that is provided by the government, it's what is raised by council tax and business rates and other income. The core spending power assumes that the council increases council tax by the maximum permitted, including the adult social care precept. So it's extremely misleading and another way of the government exercising control over what councils do. Madam Chairman, the best thing anyone can do if they want to understand the financial situation we're facing, as I've said, is to read this report. It doesn't pull any punches. It starts off drawing a comparison between the Great Frost of seventeen oh nine and the economic impact of Covid and what's happening today with the likely recession. It reminds us that as part of the settlement, there has been little mention of long-promised reforms to the funding of adult social care, children's social care, SEN, fair funding and business rates reform. No progress on any of these key issues, which are causing so many councils to virtually declare themselves bankrupt, swept under the carpet and no plan to address these fundamental problems. Paragraph twenty-one tells us that some services may never return to normal, for example, public transport. We face the prospect that public services support from the government will be scaled back before the impacts of the pandemic have ceased. Remember when they said, we will do whatever it takes? This report paints a rather different picture. Then I got to the section on funding reform from paragraph sixty-seven onwards. What this is saying is extremely worrying and serious. Yes, as I've mentioned, the reforms have been put on hold. It's worth noting that the indicative figures showing what the impact might be of the funding changes have never been made public by the government. But if that's bad, it gets worse, because this report in front of us today is suggesting that there may never be any benefit to Leicestershire from the funding reforms, and that the county council will need to solve its own financial problems. The government's non-committal stance is due, this report says, to the levelling up agenda. In other words, the government is going to put any extra funding that comes from changing the formula into the biggest sixty-three cities and towns to tackle the underperformance of northern towns at the heart of the north-south divide. We all know why they would do this. It's for political reasons, and it's critical to the Conservative Party's future election prospects. But it's a radical change in what has been, what we've been told and what would be the outcome of fair funding. We all know why they would do this, as I've said, and this report sets out what is likely to happen. If it does happen, Mr Sunak is not coming to the rescue of Leicestershire, and there will be no fair funding for Leicestershire. Now, Madam Chairman, none of this was mentioned by the cabinet. Nobody's picked up so far on it today. Mr Rhodes introducing the report, Mr Shepherd seconding it. Mr Rhodes will not be able to say any longer that he's hopeful of getting fair funding for Leicestershire if what's set out in this report comes about and happens. And I'm quite astonished that it's not been picked up so far, and I hope it is going to be picked up by some of the speakers on the administration's side and addressed, because it has come, really come to some of us as a first time. But what is actually likely to happen is that there is another agenda going on to address where this funding is going to go, and it's going to be at the expense of this county council. And that is absolutely fundamental to everything that we've been trying to do on a cross-party basis for so long, Madam Chairman. So I think it's very, very important that members and the public understand what this report is telling us. It's written by our officers, and I don't think we can duck it, and we've got to front this going forward. Thank you very much, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Galton. Dr Ayden, please.
Thank you, Chair. And I thank councillors Rhodes and Shepherd for their statements on the medium term financial strategy, and I especially thank councillor Galton for his detailed analysis, which puts the budget in a wider context. I'll begin by making it clear that the Labour group do not intend to vote for this budget. Is that simply because this is a blue team budget and we are in the red team? As members will know from the minutes of the last meeting, the Labour group voted with the Conservative group to progress unisonous ethical charter and residential care charters. We voted with the Conservative group on the Melton birthing centre, and the Conservative group voted with us to improve woodland cover. So perhaps not. And there is much in this budget we can only agree with. Funding to tackle the climate change emergency, the social care investment fund to help care providers break free from predatory corporate landlords, investment in special educational needs provision to reduce our reliance on out-of-county placements. And are Labour county councils doing things significantly differently? Well, Durham do have a hundred percent council taxes, really, for the most financially vulnerable, but they are still increasing their precept by one point nine nine percent and adding two percent of the available three percent social care precept. We also have to agree with the comments referred to earlier, made on page thirty-four, paragraph nineteen. Where are the long-promised reforms to funding for adult social care, children's social care, special educational needs and disability? This council, both members and officers, have put considerable effort into a campaign for fair funding, a campaign that has failed. And this, in the end, is why we in the Labour group cannot support this budget, Chair. We cannot, as a matter of principle, support the three percent social care precept. In practice, if in power, I admit, we might well have felt obliged to take this opportunity to balance the council's budget for two years rather than one, to give ourselves breathing space, so that the cuts that we make to services are clean, surgical and as painless as possible. Other Labour councils have had to make this compromise. Whether we would have waited to make that decision until after the budget had gone to most of the scrutiny committees, I can't be sure. But as a matter of principle, we need to make it clear that we on the red team believe this is wrong. It is wrong to shift the responsibility for social care away from general taxation and on to domestic ratepayers. The leading group on this council know it is not a fair way to fund social care. They've been complaining about it long enough, but they are not hapless victims, Chair. As members of the blue team, they get to go to the same Conservative Association dinners as the members of Parliament, who choose not to fully fund local government, who choose not to fully fund social care, and who choose not to fully fund special educational needs. And as they are not prepared, it seems to challenge their members of Parliament and their government, then I'm afraid it is down to us as members of the loyal opposition to make our stand. So I'm afraid, Chair, the Labour group will be voting against this budget. Thank you, Chair.
Dr Ayden. Mr Payne, please.
Well, thank you, Madam Chairman. I was going to talk about the green initiatives within the budget, and I might get to that. But as I've been name-checked already by Mr Galton, I think I'm going to respond to some of the comments that have already been made. So I make no apology of saying at the cabinet meeting where we put through the budget before you today, my concern that when government ministers stand up at the dispatch box and say they're allowing us a resource envelope, or they're allowing us so much resources here locally, that what they're actually saying is they're allowing us the opportunity to raise those resources from local taxpayers. And I also make no apology in saying that I firmly believe that the government need to deliver a fair funding solution, and they also need to make sure that we have adequate resources, whatever local government tier or local government, to discharge our responsibilities. And I think it's somewhat of a miracle that we've been able to, able in Leicestershire to deliver balanced budgets year on year and stable finances in spite of being the lowest funded county council in the whole country. And for that, this Conservative administration deserved a hell of a lot of credit, in my opinion. Now, it is true that we will continue our fight for fairer funding, and I do not believe the game is over. I think the game has, in some respects, just started, because members will know that the government recognise there is a problem with council tax generally, and there is a campaign and a group led by Kevin Hollyoke MP in North Yorkshire MP to fundamentally reform how council tax is raised through the abolishment of stamp duty and a levy on property. These are interesting proposals that, of course, if it were not for this current pandemic, would be getting more traction at the moment. So I firmly believe in due course, um, this government, this Conservative government, recognise these issues, recognise the dated nature of local government funding and are prepared to stand up and do something about it. And for that, I'm proud to support the ministers and the MPs that have been referred to earlier in their endeavours to do something about this issue. So we will continue in Leicestershire our fair funding campaign and will also continue as an administration being very prudent and responsible when it comes to Leicestershire's finances. And what you see is a budget before you that has prudence written all over it. And it also has some measured provisions to make sure that our priorities are funded in the future. And one of those priorities are our green climate change agenda. We have declared a climate emergency, the Conservative administration obviously led on that and it was supported by the whole council. And following that, we've made some amazing, amazing achievements. We have reduced our carbon emissions by about sixty-seven percent. And I think we reduced our greenhouse gases by about seventy percent over a period of time. And we've got a lot of proposals in the pipeline to continue that journey. The wider challenge, of course, will be reducing the three and a half million tonnes of carbon from wider Leicestershire. That battle has yet to begun because I firmly believe we need to get our own house in order. And by the sixteen million pounds that is invested in this current MTFS to do just that, I think we'll be in the best position to lead this agenda moving forward. And I firmly believe that everyone in Leicestershire is well behind us in this respect. So with that, Madam Chairman, I'll leave what I have to say and pass over to the next speaker. Thank you.
Mr Hunt, please.
Apologies, sir. I'm just putting my mute off. Um, well, first of all, actually, I'd like to do something which other speakers haven't done so far, and that is to thank the officers uh, very much for dealing with this extremely difficult situation that we were placed in. Um, uh, after Covid, but actually, uh, in reality, uh, over the ten years of austerity that local government has particularly paid for. Um, and I'd also like to thank Byron. I don't know if this is his last budget, I suspect it is. I thought he was actually going to give up halfway through the year, but he's still at it. And I do appreciate all the work that has to be done, not just by officers, but the sleepless nights that I'm sure Byron has endured before producing this budget. Well, that's the good news, if you like. The sorry news is the state that Leicestershire's in and I just want to make two particular points. Taking a step back, what's happened over the last ten years, culminating in today's very difficult situation, is that we're back on statutory services. We no longer control what we do. We simply have to execute the statutory services that national government rightly put on us but don't help us to fund. And the second thing is that they're also dictating what we're charging to local residents in their council tax. In the case of Leicestershire and no doubt many other places except Durham, uh, charging the four point nine maximum percent, as is Chanwood, charging the maximum percentage increase. That's not been imposed willingly by the Conservative administration. That's effectively being imposed by government. So the government is telling us what to do and telling us how much to pay for it, to charge for it. Well, that's, that's the big picture, if you like. And I'd just like to now go back to the consumer services, if you like. The things that residents of Leicestershire believe that they're paying for and rightly so. And I don't think there's a member of Leicestershire County Council that hasn't been able to apologise to residents for not being able to fill a pothole that is not quite deep enough or not be able to provide residents parking, even though the streets are in chaos. For not being able to tackle the service, the surface marking on roads until the van gets around in the next cycle. To not tackle speeding problems, to not introduce new crossing, safe crossing on the streets. And these are all the things that everybody, I think, listening to this is quite familiar with. And we simply haven't been able to provide the service that residents have got used to in the past. And I'd add to that, by the way, the grass cutting being reduced in our market towns. So to sum up, we're not putting forward Leicestershire County Council's budget. We're putting forward the Conservative government's budget that they've put on to us. And that's why, along with the other members of the red team, we unfortunately be opposing this motion. Thank you.
Mr Malaney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Many people here in Leicestershire are struggling during the Covid nineteen pandemic, struggling with the health impact of the situation, but also the financial impact. And therefore, it's going to come as a huge blow to people that we are going to see the maximum four point nine nine percent council tax rise this year, which will mean around another sixty-seven pound a year council tax rise for a band D taxpayer. Many people are struggling with reduced incomes, in particular, the three million excluded people who've been excluded from government support programmes, tens of thousands of whom live here in Leicestershire and are constituents of ours. And we've seen a rise also in the police precept of over six percent, fifteen pounds a year, again caused because the government doesn't fund Leicestershire Police anywhere near the average level. And whilst we are seeing large council tax rise this year, given the financial situation, unfortunately, it seems inevitable that there will be large council tax rises in future years and cutbacks to services. And this situation has occurred because the council in Leicestershire is the worst funded by this Tory government in the country. And for that reason, we will oppose this budget. Now, this Conservative administration has made fair funding from the government, securing fair funding from the government, their flagship policy. They have mentioned it many times over the years. And there were specific openings when there was real potential to secure fair funding. For example, after the twenty-seventeen general election, when the Conservative government lost their majority, the ten DUP MPs were able to extract a hundred million pound each from the government for extra funding for Northern Ireland. If the seven Conservative MPs had gone to the government then and said, Leicestershire's in real trouble. We need you to deliver that extra money, they would have had maximum leverage then at a time when the government had no majority and was basically scrabbling around to keep its majority. Equally, we go back to the twenty-first of March, twenty eighteen, when the leader of the council told us with pride how he and the deputy had met with a very obscure junior government minister called Mr Rishi Sunak and had convinced him of the case for Leicestershire. Now, this unknown individual has now become the holder of the nation's purse strings and the most powerful figure in government on financial matters. Yet it seems that now he's in a position to help us as Chancellor, he has forgotten us. This administration made fair funding its flagship policy. It put its eggs in that basket and it's clear from this report today, as Simon has pointed out, that it's not going to be delivered. Now, the reality is, all the things were in place for this Conservative administration to successfully deliver fair funding. The same party, the Conservatives, have run this county with a majority for twenty years since two thousand and one. That meant that there was none of the chopping and changing of administrations that can cause long-term planning to go out the window. There's been one party in control for a long time and why they couldn't over the years have delivered on that objective when they've had continuous power, I don't know. Equally, they have the seven all Conservative MPs in Leicestershire to put their case to government. And apparently, there was supposed to be this personal relationship with the Chancellor. Yet despite all these opportunities, all these bonuses, these golden scenario for achieving fair funding, today we are still without it and fair funding has been a total failure according to this. And it's the people of Leicestershire that will lose out through large-scale council tax rises. And sadly, I suspect in future years, through cuts in services as well. People in Leicestershire have loyally supported the Conservatives. All the MPs have been Conservative for years. The county council's been Conservative for twenty years, but they just haven't got the reward back again in terms of fair funding. We're still at the bottom of the league. We still get less money than any other county. Bluntly, the only way that anything will change is if the Conservatives get a shock and if they're voted out of office in May. And that will then give the Conservatives the shock they need to finally deliver fair funding for Leicestershire. I'm sorry that we're having to be in this situation where this huge council tax rise is being proposed. It's because the government hasn't given us the money that we need. And for that reason, the Liberal Democrats will oppose this budget today. Thank you.
Uh, Mr Mayor, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, it just takes a few seconds to come online. Um, much of what I was going to say is, is been said by the last two speakers. Um, so looking at the budget, eighty million pound deficit. Um, and I think Mr Malaney has said it very well. We've had a Conservative government for ten years. We've had a Conservative administration running County Hall for over twenty years. Um, there's not much left to say. I think, um, the Conservatives are going through the motions here. They know they're facing an election on May. They're going to face the public and the people. And I can see one or two Tories have put their hands up. Um, but, but coming back to County Hall and how it matters now, I think a five percent increase at the time of a pandemic, um, is, you know, is uncalled for. Um, and I think we should have made stronger representation to our MPs in Leicestershire to go back to government and say this wasn't palatable. But unfortunately, those arguments haven't been made. Uh, and Mr Rhodes is here presenting another cuts budget um, and another budget that's increasing five percent. Um, Mr Shepherd did raise the three percent precept in his speech and he says, um, we would face, um, uh, further cuts in adult social care. Well, I sat in on the scrutiny meeting because I was, I'm a member of that committee. The three percent wasn't at that budget meeting. The increase wasn't there. Um, it was made up from inflation contingencies and elsewhere. So there was no uh, decrease in the budget there, unfortunately. Um, so this extra three percent is just a political will of the Conservatives at this moment in time to take it. But also, they didn't have to take the three percent, Madam Chair. They could have taken, like Durham did, a lesser percent, like two percent. So by asking people in Leicestershire to pay the full three percent precept plus the one point nine nine percent, plus any extras that they might have on their parish presets, plus the police commissioner and the fire authority. You know, when they get their bills next month or the month after, they're going to be in for a shock, the residents are. Um, and I think on May the sixth, um, that shock is going to come home to roost, unfortunately. Thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Mrs Taylor, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, I think there's no doubt that the Covid crisis had a huge impact on the county council's finances. This is alongside our residents, some of whom have lost their jobs, had personal loss and are suffering in this difficult period. The additional costs and loss of income in the current financial year are forecast to exceed ninety million for the county council. County council has survived the crisis through a combination of government support, introduction of expenditure controls, re-prioritizations of discretionary funds and also being on a good financial footing before we went into this crisis. So given to deal with these crises the council councillors face in recent years, a proactive approach has been required. Given the height and uncertainty for the future, it's of the utmost importance that the county council keeps this focus. In this current climate, this council, led by the Conservatives, must be praised for being able to publish a balanced budget for two years. There are councils all over the country that are struggling to even publish a balanced budget for one year. And one of those are not, many of those are not Conservative-led councils. I've had nothing but praise for our excellent officers led by League member, Mr Rhodes. What makes this position even more exceptional is the fact that we are the lowest-funded county council in the country. We put our residents first and are protective frontline services throughout the pandemic while we still remain the lowest-funded county council. I just want to touch on a couple of points for the portfolio that I'm responsible for, children's and families. We're all aware of the difficulties my department faces with increases in children in care, increases in child protection cases and changes in the complexity of the children we look after. We have maintained our position and made improvements. We've continued to safeguard children during the pandemic and have nothing but admiration for all the staff in my department. Their blue sky thinking, quick thinking adoptions and sheer determination to look after the welfare of our children led by our director, Jane Moore, is nothing but remarkable. The journey, this department is on a journey of improvement. We have much work to do, but the road ahead looks exciting. And I'm very honoured to be leading the team to a brighter and happier future for our children. In September, in February twenty twenty, the Education Secretary Gavin Williamson promised a fundamental look across children's social care. However, due to the Covid nineteen crisis, that review has had to be delayed. It was announced again in November twenty twenty that that review would be recommencing. This is something that I very much welcome and we will be feeding in our thoughts and solution robustly into that review. This is not about saving money. This is about ensuring that children receive the right support at the right time to fulfil their potential in a safe environment.
Thank you, Mrs Taylor. Mrs Richardson, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'd just like to give my support and thanks to Byron and his team and all the officers for all their hard work. Um, it's testament to our prudent financial management by this Conservative administration that we're able to balance the budget this year and next, especially in these times and with this pandemic. Many councils are in great difficulties around the country. We do need fairer funding urgently. We are campaigning and still campaign. We do have MPs supporting us, but we've also had Covid and Brexit right on top of this. Um, we don't want to lose any further services, uh, and so we're constantly pushing for that. We really have no option than to take this decision on council tax. We recognise it's not the time we would like to have been doing any of this, especially during Covid. But we do have a duty to protect the vulnerable in our communities and to maintain services. I spoke earlier in the meeting about what we've been doing to support our communities, ensuring services have been able to survive, ensuring that they're ready for recovery and ensuring that they'll be able to deliver in different ways if need be. And I think that should be our focus. Thank you.
Mrs Richardson. Uh, Mr Sheen, please.
Thank you, Chair. If I could sum up what I'm about to say in three words, it would be this: young lives matter. On a day when Anne Longfield, the Children's Commissioner, accused the Treasury of a bias against children amidst warnings that children may be, and I quote, losing all hope of the future, with surveys suggesting young people's mental health is worsening, partly due to the fallout from Covid nineteen, I want us to take a look behind some of the facts, figures and analysis on children's services in the MTFS. The facts and figures are stark and the analysis is, to say the least, troubling. A four point nine percent council tax increase this year and seventy-nine point two million pounds of cuts to implement over four years. That's in paragraph twenty-two. With paragraphs hundred and five and six telling us that in twenty-one, twenty-two, social care and SEN services are expected to account for more than three quarters of the county council's service budget. This proportion is set to rise higher as these services also account for nine five percent of the service growth in the MTF. The growth from children's services alone is twenty-three point one million over the period of the MTFS, including ten million pounds in twenty-one and twenty-two. And by the way, well done anyone who spotted the eight hundred million pound typographical error at paragraph ninety-eight, page forty-eight. Now, before anyone feels the need to jump and say yes, but you have to offset the growth. Projected savings of thirteen point two million pounds, that's paragraph ninety-six, from the defining children's and family services for the future programme. Let me draw your attention to appendix Q, paragraph two hundred and eighty-three, sorry, page two hundred and eighty-three. Let me draw your attention to appendix Q, paragraph two hundred and eighty three, sorry, page two hundred and eighty three, the quality and human rights impact assessment of the larger part of this item designated CF two, which has been assessed as medium to high risk of negative impacts on children and young people. Furthermore, in paragraph hundred and seventy, it says overspend such as those experienced in children's social care in recent years will put the county council in a very difficult position with a need to make immediate offsetting savings. Madam Chairman, it's not hard to see the looming crisis in the council's finances. The funding system is overdue for reform. The government's review of children's social care mentioned in paragraph fifty one was announced a year ago, but only commenced or recommenced last month. And in paragraph fifty two, it says of the same review that, and I quote, there are serious concerns that the review will not adequately address the affordability of the system. Commenting last year, Jarvid Khan, Chief Executive of Barnardo's, this council's delivery partner, said, we have long warned that the perfect storm facing children's social care and the gap between demand and resource will widen further as a result of coronavirus. Adding that, we know there will be a massive increase in demand for support with the effects of the pandemic felt for years to come. But the overstretched system cannot cope and the government must step in to fund vital early intervention services so families get the help they need before reaching crisis points. Anne Longfield, the Children's Commissioner, who I mentioned earlier, estimates ten billion pounds will be needed for children's mental health support and help pupils in school catch up. She concluded, the government thinks about institutions for children, but not about children's lives. And it will take that level of change, which will be an enormous effort to really help all children flourish. So this is where we are, still funding in crisis, reforms slow to materialise, Covid nineteen adding to the pressures, not only with worsening mental health and children falling behind at school, but also increasing neglect, abuse, isolation and vulnerability to exploitation. Chair, this absolutely cannot be allowed to carry on. The government needs to realise that young lives matter. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Sheehan. Mrs Radford, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, for allowing me to speak. Adult, so adult social care has responded to short term pressures brought about by the emergency period, but also to address the longer term impact. Learning from our experiences to date has continued to develop and implement a new target operating model to ensure that people get the right support when they need it, with a focus on people, on enabling people to live independently for longer in their homes. In addition, the Adults and Communities Department will shortly be entering a strategic partnership with Hampshire County Council to improve outcomes for people by the creative use of home technology. Conservative estimates presented to the Cabinet last week show that a potential two million pound can be realised through avoided costs and savings whilst maintaining service outcomes for people who adopt a range of technology solutions to assist with their independence. There has been a significant financial impact on adult social care, which include making additional payments in the region of twenty eight point five million to care providers to cover additional costs and passporting targeting funding such as the infection control fund grant. The Adults and Communities Department is, as a result, forecasting an overspend against budget in twenty twenty, twenty one at around nine million. The continued Covid nineteen demands look likely to extend beyond this financial year. And I welcome the extra three percent for adult social care. I would like to take this opportunity to thank John Wilson and all of the team working for the adult social care and Heritage Leisure and Arts for all their hard work during the pandemic. And most of the adult social care workforce continues to work from home where they can. As well as thanking the staff from county, I think it would be remiss of me not to mention the volunteers and residents of the county who have helped during this pandemic in various areas, especially supporting the adult population. We could not have got through this without their support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Radford. Mr Brecon, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just because I was going to make a couple of comments on the health budget. It's interesting, I sort of, I wouldn't call myself a political animal, I think I'm more of a people person. But I think Byron used the phrase at the end of his speech, we are Leicestershire, we're very proud of that. I think as the lead group, we're very proud to be the lead group of Leicestershire County Council. And I think this isn't the ideal budget that we'd like to put through. And I'm sure Byron will respond to that. But this is a necessity for balancing the books and doing the very best we can with what we've got. It's interesting, we talk politics and certainly later on this evening, the city council, which is the Labour Control Council, will be advocating exactly the same as we're advocating to balance their books. And also on Monday night, I noticed Hinkley and Bosworth Borough Council, who are Lib Dem controlled, they're going for the maximum increase that they can do, as well as a five pound increase. So I think we're all in the same boat when it comes to balancing the books and making sure that we are doing the very best we can for the, for the people that we represent. So certainly, I'm very proud of what we've done here. Regarding the health part of the budget, I mean, the budget for health is slightly different. It's a, it's a grant and it's a flat grant this year. We had, it was interesting that we, two thirds of the actual budget that we actually spend relates to work spent on sexual health, children's public health from nought to nineteen and also substance misuse. That service has still continued. We've had a lot of additional Covid funding, which has been fully utilised, which has been reported through all the grants that we've received as a county council to help us deliver and try and fight this pandemic. So I think it was just the point I wanted to raise, it has been touched on before, but when we went to health overview and scrutiny, which was a cross party and that they looked at the budgets and the MTFS there, that there was no abstentions against it. There was no arguments against what was being presented here. But very much, it is as it is. But we did state that we were, we were happy in the sense that the public now realise what public health do. And obviously, that the health work of the county council will continue. But it did raise, as earlier Ted raised, that the pandemic had brought to the fore certainly issues of mental health and also the, the public to exercise. And we do look forward to picking that up. So certainly, I'll be very happy to be voting on this MTFS later on. So thank you, Madam Chairman.
Please. Back to Mr O'Shea. Mrs Page.
Chair, sorry, missed. Yes, I am unmuted now. Thank you, Chair. I hear all of the arguments and I have noticed them. But in these unprecedented times and noting all the unfairness of funding and all the additional pressures which have been placed on the county council, I appreciate that difficult decisions had to be made. And we have to appreciate that we have to, in order to continue to deliver those services, the rise of council tax was necessary. But the overall situation, in my humble opinion, would have been far worse if it hasn't been for the prudent management, working of offices and members and the innovative thinking and actions. And if we are going to the asset strategy and we're looking at that, and I note on, I believe it was page one hundred forty, the investment programme that has actually raised about eight million pounds that was reinvested into our services, which is quite laudable, in my opinion. So whilst noticing all of the negative things, I would also like to note the positive. And this positive is to praise the asset investment programme. Because without that, we probably would have struggled even more. And I certainly support this budget. Thank you very much.